You all change? Uh, this time we called the board session for June 38, 2017, on the Department of Education's Board. I saw the bikes and get in the case.
Yes, sir. Good Father God, we thank you for gathering here this afternoon. Thank you, Father God, for all the good and magnificent things that you've done in our lives through time. Father God, we pray that you continue to be with us. Thank you, Father God, for letting us survive Hurricane Irma. Thank you for letting us have homes to go back to and stay in. We battled some electricity situations, but, Father God, you are so merciful to turn it back on time. And we thank you, Father God, for all that survived the storm, even the ones who are in certain situations in different states who had more devastation than we did. But we give you all the honor, glory, and praise for what you have done, what you have allowed to happen, what you've braved us through, and what you've taken us to. And I pray, Father God, that this work session will be what you have called it to be for the enhancement of lives of citizens in our community and neighboring areas. This is our prayer, and, Father God, please keep us in good health. In Jesus' most holy name we pray. Amen.
Do you have the document of the agenda? Any changes to it?
No, sir.
The motion?
I think we adopt the agenda.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Gressman? Mr. Johnson? Or both?
We have prepared, and the finance department, Mr. Travis has prepared, the financial statements for our closeout of the year for FY17, so we've got a host of financial statements attached in.
We'll get rid of the minutes.
Oh, the minutes. Oh, all right. I'm sorry.
You've got the financials.
I tried. We've been presented the minutes. If there's no changes or questions, I would ask the board to approve the minutes.
Is the motion to approve the minutes?
Make the motion to approve.
Yeah, they'll actually go on the consent agenda. I'm sorry.
Any questions about the comments?
All right. Monthly financial report. Here we go. We have been monitoring the financials throughout FY17, and I have signed off on the budget side through the Department of Education, so we have the official financial statements completed for FY17. You see those documents? Mr. Travis, do you want to walk us through those documents that the board members have?
Yes, sir. Thank you for that fiscal year ending June 30, 2017. We have a cash balance as of the end of June 30 of $10,86,413 at three cents, and any fund equity balance of $9,375,136.97. So, that's just a summary. In total for the year, we had total revenues of $62,723,370.91, and total expenditures for the year of $59,717,393.29. Any questions there? We'll go to the comparison, which I think is a little over telling. When you look at the comparison, end of last year, FY16, our fund equity balance, we closed the books with $6,310,159.35, and just ran off a minute ago to $9,375,000. So, we are to the good, adding an additional $3 million and $65,000 to fund balance for the year. There will be three different reports we'll be going through tonight. This is the June fiscal year ending, and then we'll have the first two months of FY18 here in just a minute. We go to the detail. You can see revenues. We came in a little stronger than what we had budgeted on our local tax revenues, 102.93%. 115% of our budgeted TAVT, and other local came in 106.96%. And with the state, certainly, we had those numbers up front from the state from the very beginning. So, overall, we still ended up at 101.13% of our revenues for the year. We ended up at 62 million, 782,000 versus $62,83,000 of budgeted revenues for the year. So, and I think you can see that by and large, that a good bit of that came in as a result of a local, particularly TAVT. That was, we only budgeted $1,001,000 versus bringing in $274,000. Any questions there? Okay. We'll move on to the expenditures. On the expenditures, you can look at it functionally through instruction, 92% of what we budgeted, $38,000 versus $41,873. And on down through, when you drop down to the very bottom, we ended up at 95% of our budgeted expenditure, which is a good thing. That's where you want to be when you get all said and done. So, we had budgeted the $62,851,721, and only actual expenditures came in at $59,717,000. Questions there? Okay. And I guess we ask that we put on the consent agenda, please.
Yes, sir. We would ask that these financial statements be included at the regular board meeting. Are there any comments, questions?
The next set of financials will be for the period ending July 31, 2017. It will be the first month of our fiscal year 2018. We had cash balance of $9,488,952.22, with an any fund balance of $9,382,425.89. And I think, you know, what I kind of gleaned from this, quite honestly, was we actually went up a little bit in our fund balance from the end of June to the end of July. I think the little later start in the school, with the school year, we didn't start buying quite as early as maybe what we normally do. So, our expenditures and our revenues kind of matched up pretty closely, and we didn't really see a big swing there. So, we actually had a little uptick in that fund equity. If you look at the comparative for, well, you can look at it right here on this particular sheet. We ended the year at $9,375,000, and were at the end of July at $9,382. Any questions? Okay. I guess you can bring up that comparison as well, end of July, quickly, in that basically, you know, we were at $9,000 versus $6,000 last year, $6,306. And you can see exactly, I mean, going back two years ago, $6,310 versus $6,306. So, we, you know, we got a little bit of a drop there, and that's proper, preparing for the start of the school year. You've got a little more expenditures going out in July, getting geared up for the school year, starting in early August versus mid-August, what we did this year. So, I think that tended to shift things a little bit, and I think you'll see that when we get to the August numbers. There are details related to this July, if you want to go through those. If you want to just pass through those, we can pass over those, and you can look at them later if you have any questions. Okay, let's go to the August reporting. And this would be for the period ending August 31, 2017, cash balance of $8,650,286.33. And that's what our fund equity was. We had nothing in receivables, nothing in payables for the month we had finished out of our accruals, effectively. Here, obviously, you can see that we did now begin to do a good bit more of that spending for the start of the school year, and dropped down from that $9,375 to fund equity, that But we're very nearly still at that $3 million differential between a year ago this time in August of $5,680,000. When you look at comparative, you could do that up to normal. A year ago this time in August, we were at $5,680,459.50 versus the $8,650,286.33. Just shot at $3 million. Any questions? Okay. If you want to bring up that Sloskis summary report. I don't send that. You didn't send that. I'm gonna have to add that.
Can you email the change?
Yep.
I'll get it.
Yeah.
Do you have another document you want to go through?
No, that's it. Your financials. Yep, I'll get it.
And the, you know, load it on. Are there any questions about those financial statements? I'm looking to load it. It's, we're in a little better financial position than we were last year, and we'll continue to monitor the funds as they come in this year. I have been meeting with the faculties this week, just for board members to know that I've finished up my last faculty meeting today with Indian Creek today, but I've met with all the schools now, with all the faculties, and explained to them how they were being paid this year, and walked them through basically a three-year history of how we've paid everybody over the last three years, and pointed out the 3% that was given to all employees, all sort of classified employees back in FY16, and then the 3%, one-time local supplement that was given to all employees in FY17, including classifieds, or, you know, pointed out that classified had, with FY16, the 3%, FY17, the 3%, and the 6% increase over those two years. And then we are maintaining the FY17 3% this year, using the Y18 salary schedule and additional 1% that they will be receiving this year. So, I have a detailed report that I went through with each of the faculties explaining that, and make sure everybody understood how we calculated salaries this year, and answered any questions that they had. Like I said, I had my last one of those meetings today. I also pointed out, it was a discussion we had last year about why we pay once a month, and I made sure I had a slide in there that explained why we pay once a month. The fact that we get our QBNE funds, they're wired to us at the end of the month from the state, and that's when they pay us. So, I made sure I pointed that out to everybody. So, that should prepare us as we start the pay cycle, beginning tonight. Phone checks are electronically transferred to everybody tonight, so.
Okay. Apologize for that. Up on the screen, you'll see the Sloskis report for August 2017. Got a total for August of $467,762.85, a little down from the month before. We like that July number a lot better, but we're still maintaining about $460,000 average over the life of Sloskis board thus far. We've had total receipts that have come in of $12,902,978.74. So far to date, we've paid in principal and interest $6,998,73.73 back on our bonds. And then you can see there the expenditure categories that we have spent those funds to $12,169, bringing Nichols Elementary. We've already expended $4,400,000. That's over half of the expected construction costs on that. Very little on the CHS renovation work. We're going to be preparing a proposal here fairly shortly to put out for bid on that. Technology by facility, right, that's just an aggregate grand total of what we've spent today, and that would include security-type features as well as your Chromebooks and other technology. So far, we've spent $954,332.52, and that is a combination of both the construction costs and the soft costs or design fees related to that.
Excuse me, Mike.
Yes, sir.
Do we not have a copy of that?
I just emailed that just now, but I can get you a copy of that.
I think.
Yes, sir.
That's all there is, yeah.
And then, effectively, the last category being CMS AD Building, $19,930, which would include not only the construction costs, the soft costs of the design of the facility, but the FSWME that went into it, whether it be the cameras and the sound system and bleachers, and, you know, all the other items that relate to that. That you're included as part of the construction, the actual construction contract. So, the actual construction cost on that particular facility was a little over $1,707, if you recall. Any questions related to that? Okay. Thank you, and I'll get copies for you.
Those items will be added to the consent agenda for approval at the regular meeting. We do have out-of-state travel. We have a number of trips. The AP Economics class, we'll be going to New York City, and they will be touring Wall Street and other interests there related to economics and finance. They'll be going March 30th, and return April 4th. Nichols Elementary School, fourth graders will be going to the Museum of Science and History, Jacksonville. And we've got a number of competitions here that ROTC will be attending from October through January. This is the meet of their season, competitions. It's okay with the board, we will place this on the consent agenda for regular meeting.
We talked about one time, if we signed against her or just never got around to it, like Jacksonville, you know, it's two hours away. They don't have to have approval, they got it, and it's four hours away. We talked about one time, maybe doing some kind of mileage deal. Would we back off that for any particular reason, or we just quit looking into that, or what? I mean, we have a ton of trips to Jacksonville. You know, I don't know if we need to, if that's for some reason legally.
Something we have discussed.
I mean, it just doesn't make sense, everybody gets a Jacksonville, has to go through us, but you get a man, you don't.
Our insurance carrier pointed out that there couldn't be a liability issue.
Well, that's what I'm asking, is there a reason legally we can't do it?
That some states don't honor our immunity, sovereign immunity, and that travel in some states could subject the system to liability that would typically have in Georgia, and that if the board approves out-of-state travel, then that may help if there was a legal question about some of that. That was one of the responses we got from our insurance carrier, the SBA, cited that as a possibility.
I mean, for the most part, we're talking about Florida.
Yeah.
I mean, is that, are the SBA agents, that's going to call a problem, or we don't know?
I guess we could investigate it, find out. It would certainly reduce the number of.
I was going to say, and then they have to think so forward, you know, to make sure it's done ahead of time, and make sure we're able to prove it, you know, whatever. I mean, it's two hours away. We get people getting down all the time, we don't have to prove that. So, unless legally there's some reason we need to be doing it, or, you know.
It's something we could certainly investigate, and look into and see. We've kind of left it alone at this point.
There may be a reason we can't. I just would like to look into it.
Obviously, if there is or there isn't. We certainly will, see.
These first two is paying their own way?
Yes, sir.
And the sister's taking care of the rest of them?
Yes, sir.
Congressman Lee?
Yes, sir.
Senator Lee's board, I did check on that when it came up, and as you noted, insurance had mentioned, Agent had mentioned it, I think, Mr. Travis. I don't think there's a legal issue involved on adding that layer of protection with the board, and the board might need to change the policy about out-of-state trips, but, you know, somebody needs to prove it, the principal or someone, but you're not getting an issue because you got the other states on whether we might not have sovereign immunity in other states, but we would be fine, Jacksonville really, so, but that, there's no real difference, you know, going to Jeff Wilder or to Jacksonville.
Well, that's what I was getting at. I mean, it doesn't mean we can put a mileage, you know, out-of-state unless it's under a certain amount of mileage, you know, and cut a lot of that out. That's where we, everybody goes to Jacksonville Zoo or the mosque, you know, and there's just a ton of trips to go there. But I was just curious, is that, was that something we could adjust or not? But now, talking about the president, I'm assuming any trip, but we're going to ground the principals, right?
Yes.
So, there's approval there.
Yeah.
But didn't you say it was the insurance company?
Well, that's what our insurance carrier told Mr. Travis. He had a talk with him about it, but, you know, as Mr. Cottin points out, we have our doubts about whether or not it would really be a legal problem with it, so.
Well, just look at it, sir. I mean, you know, I just remember we talked about it, and it just kind of got the thing again when I saw Jacksonville.
I think it's been, it's been more of a local decision, but I guess helps manage out-of-state travel in a way. I've been told there was a situation years ago in Avery Group and somewhere.
Well, I still think if people want to say, boy, we need to, I'm just saying that since we're so-called placed to Florida line, you know, a lot of Jacksonville, or even Tyler Acid, they were really not necessarily, I mean, you know.
Yeah.
Anyway, okay.
We have, we have, Ken, you want to explain what that?
Did you, did they?
They're fine with putting that on the consent agenda, nobody objected. Surplus property, you want to describe that?
Yes, sir. We were approached by Steve Parker with the Mercy Management Agency, just leading into hurricane season. He brought to it his old projector that I think may have been purchased here at Surplus eight or 10 years ago, to see if we could work on it, they were acting up, and those computers were really beyond, those projectors were beyond repair, and were in pretty bad shape. And so, I spoke with Senator Lee. We, we had about 30 spare EFS projectors, just like the ones in the room right now that came out of Rockston when we moved that new school. We'll have about that many additional ones coming in spare when we move out of the current Nichols Elementary. And so, I mentioned that our responsibility of letting them have three of those to use in their operations center, and we did, it was kind of pressing with Irma on the way, so we did install those as a loan, any board could hold on that, but we really made things more and less smoothly out there, so we just felt like it would be better.
Make sure the invoice goes straight to West.
They'd be better to use there than sit in there, so we're just spared at this point.
Our policy requires any material like that that we give to another agency or whatnot, we require board approval, so I was asking the board to approve this, and I was part of the consent. All right.
Make sure we get enough to cover this order.
Yes, sir. Change orders. We have a couple of change orders here. The Eastside Elementary School change order. The first one you'll see is a credit back to the Board of Education of $300, and then you'll see another one charged of $465.30. And we're asking the board to approve these change orders on the consent agenda. We also have a change order on Nichols Elementary School job. We have two change orders. The first one is to change all BCT floor into MCT. You remember when we bid this school, when we included MCT as a add alternate, but we went with the, basically a price without the MCT, and now that we see where we're at in the project, and, for example, the next one you're going to look at will be a reduction of the cost of $100, over $100,000, so we feel like we're in a position to go with the MCT floor. It's, it doesn't require waxing, and BCT requires waxing, so we will eventually save enough money by not having to pay staff to wax, strip and wax each year to tape of the floor. And we've talked about any new construction we do moving forward, we will go with the MCT floor and our similar product, that we don't have to wax like we do the old BCT tile. The BCT tile looks good, but you've got to wax it to keep it waxed, so we're asking the board to go with this MCT floor. The staff at Nichols Elementary School did go look at a school that has similar flooring, and they wanted to do that from the beginning, and we wanted to wait and see until where we were at in the project, just whether or not we went forward and installed the MCT instead of BCT, so. Any questions about that? The next change order from Nichols, you'll see that we are not going to have to install the fire pump and housing. They have sufficient water pressure out of Nichols Elementary School going into the project, and we doubts about whether or not they would have the water pressure to power the sprinkler system. They do have the water pressure, therefore, we don't need this pump system, and it's a deduct of $117,465. And it's a deduct of $117,465. And we're asking the board to approve these change orders. That's a good change here, to approve these change orders as part of the consent agenda.
I mean, you always want to put something that's a little nicer in these schools. When we build them, we look right from the get-go, of course, that's a lot of money. But then you turn it around, and there's the money. You save it on the fire pumps, I don't have a problem. I think it looked that pretty good, I would.
Yes, sir. The next item that we have on the agenda is an SRO agreement. We're not prepared, I'm providing this as information tonight, not prepared to ask the board to approve this tonight. We should be prepared to come back next month and ask the board to approve it. But we've been working with the county officials, county attorney, to get this agreement executed. And come back next month and ask for approval, hopefully. Truck, trailer, and tractor. We have a, we received a grant through the CTA Department, the State Department of Education. Mr. Reiner, Brad Reiner, the CTA Director, applied for a grant through the CTA, State Department. And we received approximately $90,000 in grant funding. And so, for the new ag building, this was specifically for the ag building, the grant was. We're going to purchase a tractor for the ag department to use at the new ag building, and also a livestock trailer for the ag department to use when they transport livestock. So, real excited about this, it would help them operate efficiently and move the livestock around. And also, we are asking, so we used the grant funding to purchase the trailer and the tractor. Now, the truck, we're going to ask the board to allow us to use floss funds to purchase the truck. We need the truck to pull the livestock trailer, the ag department uses their truck frequently, and also, some of the other departments, athletics and such, use the truck, all trailers. But it's time for a new truck, the current one has just wore out. It's, it's been, we've gotten our money worth out of it, and they've been requesting the truck for some time now. And they're scared to take it out of town. So, we're asking the board to approve the purchase of a new truck. And you'll see the quotes that we got there. Walker Jones having to load for a 2018 Dodge Ram 350. Any questions?
What's the year of our current? So it's worn out, what is it?
So over 10 years, I don't think.
What we have to do is.
We're actually probably, you know, recondition and do any rebuilding needs to be done, and use it for our maintenance department, just for local use here, for maintenance vehicle.
And maintenance has asked for, we've been talking with maintenance about vehicles too. And so, I think they have a need for it, can use it locally. So we'll, we'll continue to use it. But it's, it's not worthy of take that, for example, the ag department goes to Oklahoma. And they may drive to Oklahoma or Indiana, or something like that, and this is too far. Of course, they tell that to us, we'll load on, so. Charter system renewal. You'll see that we have a, the first document is a resolution to extend the current charter for a five-year term to align with the charter system renewal process and the district accreditation process. And we're asking the board to approve a five-year renewal in this resolution. Our current charter is set to expire June 30th of 18. And this five-year renewal will move us out to June 30th of 2023. We were prepared to ask the board for a one-year extension, but yesterday, we were notified by Lynn Plunkett, who works with the Department of Education and the Charter System Department. She informed us that they would give us a five-year, go ahead and approve us for a five-year extension on our current charter. And the original plan was to do a one-year extension, and then when we go through our re-creditation next year with SACS, they would come back and give us a five-year at that point. But she called me yesterday and told me that they would give us a five-year extension. And then she had Lou Ersti follow up with an email that agreed that they would go ahead and grant us a five-year. She's been in town last week for the charter training. She was one of the ladies that conducted the training last week. And then she was also in town beginning yesterday for the Career Academy review that they are currently going through.
Oh, the whole first guess was to align it with SACS, why is that?
The correspondence that Lou sent was that they would expedite it, I guess, in '23 and align it at that point. But she told us to go ahead and, you know, get it approved for a five-year period. That's something that we, if we go ahead and get it for a five-year period, then we know we have it.
I understand that, I mean, I don't care if that went towards best, but I just thought the reason we were trying to align it too was to make it easier on.
Well, evidently, they're not going to, they're, they're just going to go ahead and approve us and not worry about being part of that visit next year, I guess, is what it amounts to.
I'm not looking at it as a policy.
Yeah, yeah, we were excited when we got it. That's one less, you check that off the list for next year to have to.
Well, I was, if we don't meet some of these goals, I gotta sit out here.
They could revoke our charter. And then we would just have to go back to align by all those title 20 rules, and we wouldn't get that charter funding that they have. And, but we are meeting the goals, we've met the goals. They're pleased with our progress. At this corner, willing to award us a five-year charter. And part of the whole philosophy with charter systems is to reduce bureaucracy, you know? And if you reduce another piece of bureaucracy for next year, I guess that's part of the philosophy of charter systems. So. Any other comment? Policies. We have the Policy JRA. We presented this last month. This is to be in compliance with state law regarding burpa privacy. Took the suggested policy from GSBA and reworked it for Coffey County, and asking the board to approve this descriptor code JRA policy. And we have reviewed it, I reviewed it, Chan reviewed it, and Dana Bickers, who's, works with Special Services. She and Chan both worked on this policy. And we feel like it is, puts us in line with what the expectations for burpa are. And it deals with complaints, if we get a complaint, then who's going to handle it? And Dana, Special Services, will be my designated to handle burpa complaints. And it just outlines the steps we'll take to deal with it. The other policy, JR, after reviewing our current, Policy JR, we're going to continue with that policy as is, we're not suggesting any changes to it. Once again, Dana and Chan reviewed that policy, and there's no changes to it requested.
I said, the board is not handling, we will not do anything this time.
Well, I'm going to change that, I'm going to put on here, I recommend JRA be approved. To me, recommends a board approval of Policy descriptor code JRA. I'm about to change that inside of the board. This will be placed on the consent agenda. Are you working it, Chan?
I can do it more, not really, it's not what it says that.
Reckons board approval. Of Policy descriptor code JRA, I'm going to save that close. I think I can move it over to consent agenda right now. Is it on there? So we can take, board approved JR, we can take that off, because it is, I'm going to leave that off of the consent agenda. And then JRA, I'm going to edit that to say the board, to continue to recommend, it's board approval. If you add that on the consent agenda, there's that, to, we've been to recommend board approval, closing files. All right, grade JRA done that. All right, so thank you for pointing that out, Ms. Johnson. So that has been changed on the, the agenda. All right. And if it pleases the board, we'll move on to audience participation. All right. I do have someone here for audience participation, Ms. Kayla Daniel. And I have talked to Ms. Daniel prior to this meeting. Dr. Vangis has talked to Ms. Daniel prior to this meeting. So if you want to come forward and, if you can come to the podium. And you will have five minutes to speak to the board. And if you would refrain from using names regarding staff or employees or anything in the school district. But your, the floor is yours for five minutes, all right?
Hi, my name is Kayla Daniel. I have three children that attend Westside Elementary School. And at this point, I just feel like Westside is not the best environment for my kids because of the situations that have happened at the school pertaining to my daughter's sore clothes. One of my kindergartners was hit by her teacher. And my fifth grader has had, you know, sprained ankle and a TSP, and has wanted to call me. But the school has responded with, it's too early for that, or it's late in the day to call your mom. So I just feel that I just want a fresh start at the new school, to be able to go over my daughter's IEP. And, you know, I'm an active parent, so I want to be able to go to the schools, be active, and not be considered as a threat. I did have the police call on me, which I felt like was, was not right to do. And it has humiliated me and embarrassed me and my kids, to where I just feel like it is time that we move on, get a new fresh start, and just, just get my kids to their highest potential. I do want what's best for my kids. I love my children, and I just want them to be happy about going to school. I want them to be educated on things, that they, they will see their highest potential.
Question, I heard you say you have IEP, do you have a special needs key?
Yes, ma'am. One of my kindergartners had a stroke at 14 months. So she has been through the Fades Can't Wait program down in Atlanta, Georgia. That's where we ended up at. She had the stroke in the south, so we had to go up north to where she was seeing all types of doctors. She's had surgeries. But Brooklyn has bounced back, Brooklyn is normal. She was in a sub-contained classroom last year, just for three days, I believe, for two hours. But the other time, she was in a private pre-k school, normal kids. And this is the first year she's now in a normal class setting. She's getting pulled out for one-on-one sessions, ELA, and language arts. And I wanted her IEP to be in depth, talked about, explained, I wanted goals to be presented. I wanted to kind of go over that at the new school, because there were so many issues going on already at Westside. I was already informed that we were going to go to Satella. But at the last minute, it was changed for us to continue to go to Westside. So I just really wanted to talk with the school teachers and who she was with, to kind of just explain what my baby is going through and what our goals were. But I just want to be able to start over fresh with a new school that's going to listen and not consider me a threat. Because I'm definitely not a threat. I have a business management degree, and I work at Lowe's, and I'm already being considered for an assistant management position, so I know how to be professional. But at that time, I was misjudged, and police was called unnecessarily. And I just, I've lost trust in Westside. And I just want a new start with my kids at a different school.
Dr. Lee? Are you aware that she wanted to go to Satella, start the year? Is that what you said?
To start fresh, after the incidents that happened.
Now, you won't turn around, you're written that the first of the year.
Yes, we started, we moved out of Austin, we didn't start here. And the second, the third day, they started, but then the second.
That's fine, I just, I thought you said you was going to go to Satella.
No.
To start with, and you had, and then you go to Westside. Consider it. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am.
Appreciate it. At this time, I would ask the board that we move to an executive session to discuss and deliberate upon the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, disbar action, dismissal, or periodic evaluation of a public officer or employee. And also, to discuss real estate. And also, to discuss information regarding the student that could be personally identifiable, information from a student's educational record. And to discuss records that are otherwise protected from disclosure under the Open Records Act. Any more?
New business to an executive session.
Press, Mr. Thompson, hold on. Johnson, press, hold on. Rotation is a gun, we're going to enter our record.